Good evening, everyone. I've got six thirty and I'd like to welcome Deb online at Lawrenceville. Thank you. You'll be joining us shortly. I'd like to call for the first meeting of members for the Mount Vernon City Council officially called forward at six thirty here. And the first item on agenda is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda that went out?
So, I think it's Scott.
Oh, sorry. Great. It's all voted on the agenda approval. All bear the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next section of the meeting is about any unscheduled communications, if there are parts of the agenda that you want to address, just note the agenda in your app. We'll get to that at that time. Or is there anything that anybody's here to talk about that is not in the agenda? Very good. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We've got two items. The council amendments from the last meetings and the licenses still applicable are. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Great, and Stephanie. We're ready to vote on the consent agenda. All bear the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Deb. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to public hearings. Now, the first item on E one is we need to untable this electorate. Are we ready to do that?
No.
We're not? So keep the table?
Yep.
Okay. That takes out E one and F one. Then we need to go to E two, public hearing for consideration of amendment to chapter one oh five solid waste control code ordinances. Officially called that home meeting order, public hearing order. Chris, do you have anything to... Travis here?
So, this is a clarifying ordinance. We have ordinances against illegal dumping of trash. We do not have ordinances necessarily for what would be considered yard rates of a true degree. This is kind of a post-rachial problem, but we've had a number of contractors and individuals that live outside the city limits try to dump out at the Bryant Road site. The issue with that is the citizens of Mount Vernon pay for that disposal. And we're no longer getting FEMA reimbursement except we don't get FEMA reimbursement for rachial yet. So, we do have the cameras up. We did find a couple of islanders and it was voted by the attorneys that we needed to make this amendment through our code order for it to be... In order for them to prosecute, basically.
The intent is that we will review the film and we will pursue and we will prosecute. Am I here for the tellative of G?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone here from the public here to discuss, to talk about that? Item of the public hearing? If not, then I will... If there's nothing else, we're closed the public hearing and move to F four, which is the ordinance permitting chapter one oh five solid waste control of Mount Vernon code ordinances. First reading. Let me know if Chris is... Are we ready to move forward on motion or not?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Paul.
A second.
Thank you, Deb. So, movement seconded to approve the recommended changes to chapter one oh five solid waste control of Mount Vernon code ordinances, and that is a roll call vote if you are ready, Marsha.
Herman?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Herman? Yes. I can't hear Marsha very well.
Thanks for putting that out, Deb.
Marsha, Chris.
That was everybody that motion does carry. And that takes us out of the E section of our agenda to F one, I believe. And that's the...
F two, that's...
Yes. Sorry, I have to...
Minus chapter seventy-seven all terrain vehicles and sole wheels of Mount Vernon code ordinances. Chris, do you have anything new to add?
Just some clarifying language, just the way that both ordinances read that relates to places of operation. There's a couple of words that are missing, so... Essentially, under chapter seventy-seven, you'll designate by a resolution later in this chat, or later in this meeting, what roads ATVs, UTVs are allowed to be utilized on. The language is slightly different in chapter seventy-seven and seventy-eight, so I'll work with the attorneys to clarify that language before the next meeting.
Do you still want to move forward with this thing?
You can move forward. You still have another reading, so there's no need to necessarily hold up the second reading, but I just wanted to give you the heads up that you could have some clarifying language on before the third reading. It won't change the generalities of what are going on with the two ordinances. These are required by state law, but just wanted to point that out.
The council members have questions, Chris, on this?
This is the second reading for both...
Correct.
Twenty twenty-two A and...
Yes. We haven't received any communication regarding either of these ordinances, just that information?
Unless there's other questions or concerns due to approval ordinance, or the second reading ordinance, ten dash seventeen dash twenty twenty-two A.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Deb. And that is a roll call vote if you are ready, Marsha.
Herman?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Ten dash seventeen dash twenty twenty-two A passes. Moving on to F three. Same principle through chapter seventy-eight golf carts and ATVs, the Mount Vernon code ordinances, same as what you just mentioned. So, a motion to move forward on that ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, Deb. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, that is great. Sorry. Movement seconded, Deb.
Didn't know, man.
Movement seconded to pass, move forward on the ordinance ten dash seventeen twenty twenty-two B, chapter seventy-eight amendment. Are we ready for a roll call vote, Marsha?
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Thank you, Deb. That motion carries. Moving on to section G. Resolution eleven seven twenty-three two A, private development by and among the city of Mount Vernon, et cetera. Chris, do you want to preface any comments there?
So, this is what's considered a resolution in support, basically a resolution. What would state your proposed terms. So, in order for the city to capture these tip dollars this year, so we have to certify tip dollars in December, capture them in actual fiscal year twenty-three. But in order to have cash on hand and available, we have to do a what, a resolution of the tenth, essentially. And what the resolution essentially states is that the new owners of the Singalung, or what's known as the Singalung Building, need to tear down the two dilapidated homes that are connected to that building. It's actually pulling on the back wall of the brick structure. So, what I've done is included, you know, just initially repairs that they've identified to get the building secure and safe and usable, which is a significant amount of money that is even start with, but they're going to have to spend, obviously, on renovations inside. I will tell you that I've been in discussions with Lynn County for the past three or four months on these two homes. Lynn County wanted to condemn them. They're that bad. So, I had a conversation with the owners and it's fifty thousand dollars to remove the asbestos in those two homes, salvage the actual Singalung building itself, and then allow them to renovate. I've talked to both Greg and to numerous agents, and I'm excited for what they have planned for that building, and I think it'll be a vast improvement. So, again, there'll be a development agreement that actually comes later. But in order for me to capture these dollars December one, I have to have at least a renovation of the tenth. So, essentially, if the council through this resolution, they're saying, yes, I agree to give the fifty thousand dollar grant at a later date.
With the development... Sorry, hold on. I was just going to say, let's get our attention from one of the funds where the original...
Tip.
Yeah, it makes sense. Would the development agreement be along the lines of they agree to, you know, we provide the fifty thousand dollar grant, they agree to do their plans to...
It's a reversible deal, so as long as it, for us, I mean, from the perspective of the city, the removal of the two dilapidated buildings that are going to cause major problems with the existing building are the important thing. So, we've limited it to, at this time, to the variance, basically, or the two buildings. And as long as they do that...
So, that would be...
Yeah, we would reverse it, not to extend our development agreement.
Sure, sure.
Not to, I mean, they could, you know, they have a lot of plans. They could ask for a new agreement in the future, but this is specific to the removal of those two homes and the asbestos that comes with it.
So, this is interesting because at the candidates' forum, one of the questions that was asked was, how will we compete with Solon? And it was my opinion that we can't really compare Solon and Mount Vernon because Solon has chosen to do their downtown business district development by tearing down old buildings and building new structures and whatnot. And Mount Vernon has prided itself in historic preservation and, you know, making that a keystone of what Mount Vernon is about. And from my perspective, my answer was, we need to invest in those things that we cherish and that we believe in and, you know, provide assistance where we can when those opportunities come up. So, when I saw this on the agenda, it was like, oh, you know, because this is exactly what we're talking about. I can't think of a better use of tip funds than to assist in, you know, one, removing dangerous dilapidated buildings, but two, providing an opportunity to repair a very essential building on the corner of our, you know, first and first. So, I could speak very strongly in support of this.
I have a question, excuse my ignorance on this. There's thirty-five thousand to remove the buildings, and then there was seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty to remove the asbestos. If you remove the buildings, aren't we removing the asbestos?
No.
You have to, you have to...
You have to do a...
Like, you have to materialize after then...
So, they have to do remediation and show it separately.
Okay.
It's a rather large fine if they do it.
No, fair.
But yes, they should, they would do the remediation first than their removal of the building.
I completely back it also. I agree with Paul, and I think that I applaud them for their creativity. It is an extremely common downtown space. And also, it's extremely prominent. Those two dilapidated buildings are right on number one, and also very visible to people traveling on that road. And I really think this is, to your point about economic development, is what we should be doing.
Yeah, the basis of tax increment financing was the development of the blighted areas. So, the foundation of what TIP was established for is this very purpose. And, you know, it's difficult because we don't have a lot of what I would consider blight in Mount Vernon. But these two buildings happen to be deteriorating fairly quick. And if they don't have some investment soon, then the best thing to do would be to remove them and save, save the historic building that's on the corner.
And again, the same group that's purchasing the Singalung building, or purchasing these two, and they're tearing down and...
Correct. It's a package deal. The two homes come with the building. They're physically attached, and that's the problem. They're, as they deteriorate, they're pulling on the back wall of what would be the current commercial Singalung building.
Our own building happens to have depended over there for years and years.
I think, and, you know, the owners are extremely motivated. They've done things like this in not only other cities, but other states, so.
So, Chris, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Has the actual sale of the properties gone through?
So...
Or is that sale contingent upon this agreement?
The last communication that I received is that they closed.
They have not closed.
They have not closed.
It's basically contingent upon this.
Okay.
It looks like Greg's here.
I can't hear. Can I come up to the mic?
It looks like it's contingent upon the TIP being approved, Deb. So, it has not closed, is what Mike Smith said.
I think we ought to sort that out. I think that would be good diligence for us to understand what stage of the game they are and what dependencies they have upon each other. I'd like to give a little fact. I'm probably in support of going forward with this, but I want to understand the order of things and what dependency there is on things here before we go too far.
And as Mike prepares to speak, Deb, the only thing that I gathered from the document in the package is that the fifty thousand dollars would not be paid until after the two buildings were raised and the asbestos was...
Removed.
Yeah, was removed and taken care of properly. And then, once that was all done, we would pay. Is that, is that correct?
Is that correct?
Yes. There's, there's two things here. Number one, this isn't the actual... Now, I will say, you are agreeing by adopting this resolution to move forward with said agreement at a later date. This agreement establishes what amounts to a debt, so I cannot, the city cannot claim tax increment financing dollars without having an obligation to claim. And from a timing perspective, it would make sense for us to try to claim those dollars December one of this year because we won't collect on those funds until July one of twenty-three. So, the goal being, I would like to capture those dollars in the next fiscal year so that I have them available when the development hearing is actually done. But the city isn't necessarily, we wouldn't have to cut a fifty thousand dollar check tomorrow based upon this. We're establishing a debt, and they have to follow through with their portion of agreement, which is the removal of the two homes. So, that's the way that this agreement is intended. Our goal is to remove the blight. Their goal is to do a redevelopment. Our fifty thousand dollars is tied directly to the houses. They're going to be paid as soon as those houses are removed. How about introducing yourself and address, co-writer?
Hi, I'm Mike, Mike Smith, one twenty-four and a half, First Street, Top West, Mount Vernon, Iowa. And my relationship, this is my sister-in-law, brother-in-law, that are interested in this building. So, the way I understand it is that they would be closing early December. They have an agreement, but it's also contingent upon this meeting on the removal of those two buildings, which is fairly costly. Also, I think there are some, someone is doing an inspection of the building. If that goes the way that we, she thinks it's going to go, then, of course, they would close early December. Now, some things to keep in mind as we think about this project. My sister is not, it's not for investment, so she's going to do it the right way. I mean, she's really going to, I think the building is going to be well-served in her hands, in Greg's hands. They're going to, if you knew my sister, you'd know what I'm talking about. She is going to, I think, turn into a building, take it to the next step. It's already a nice building. Turn it into a building that we can be happy with, proud of, in Mount Vernon. Now, I'm a little putting the, putting the parlor for the horse on this because if they don't buy the building, of course, they don't get the money. So, I don't know what they have to, I know time is of the essence because I think they want to get those buildings down before winter. Because what's going on, moisture is getting behind, and as we know, moisture freezes, and then it starts to really cause problems. In fact, if you go down there between the good building, public, and the two bad buildings, they've already have a crack in the twin, but they have built in the park, and of course, it's going to widen again. So, that's what I know about it, and I think we would be happy with their, in our community. Any questions, Deb?
No, I, I, no, I don't have questions. I just, I needed to understand the sequence of events. And I can see that Greg has his hand up, and I think he wants to talk.
Hi, it's Greg and Jude Piniere.
Hi, guys.
The wonders of technology. So, we're, just want to thank everyone there in Mount Vernon for even hearing this as a possibility. We're both very excited. I should let Jude do the talk. He's actually in Mount Vernon, but I can tell you that having been up there, I feel very welcome and comfortable there, and we're really looking forward to doing our reverse retirement out there. But just to clarify, we are under contract. The current close date is set for December second. We anticipate closing without any issue. We don't think the, we've done a lot of due diligence on the building already. We kind of know the issues already. The biggest issue is those back two buildings, so we obviously want to get them down. And we'd like to, to get them down just as soon as we can. We understand that you can't just knock them down in one day. But the asbestos will have to be remediated first. We have the company already lined up to do that, and then the buildings would have to be removed. Like Mike says, we do want to do that right away because of the damage that's occurring to the building. We also want to put a new roof on right away because of some issues as well. And then we have big plans for the building to really make it a superb building that will be proud of, and everyone in Mount Vernon will be proud of as well. And then that second floor will be our home. So, we're looking forward to it. Jude's, we should say something since she's Mike's brother, but I just want to make sure everyone understood that we want to proceed on this and just do a fabulous job for everybody.
So, I just, I am, Jude, I just want to add real quick. I know your time is important, but the other pieces and things that we do to the building will also be dependent on us getting a grant for this. And that's going to free up funds for us to do some other things. There's paint on the building that probably never should have been on there, and it's peeling. And that's eighty thousand dollars to get that paint off. And that is one major issue as well that we want to tackle. But in order to do some of these other things, and then, of course, make the storefront on first, down below spectacular, and then our apartment upstairs. And I'm a preservationist, and so I'm very excited that Mount Vernon has a preservation society. I think that's really fabulous, and that's also weighing in on why we want to be there. And of course, Mike and Deb, it's a beautiful building and being with family. So, we're really excited and proud, and we hope that you honor our grant, and we will make you all proud. And thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
And if you have any questions, other than schedule, you know, we're happy to answer.
We do have a local contractor that's handling everything as well, and he's, he seems to be really dialed in with the community and really knows what he's doing. And so, he was the one that walked us through all the steps of getting the abatement people in there, looking at that, looking at the roof, looking at the two buildings, and so on and so forth. So, we really had good counsel on that because there was another investor, or there was an investor, we're not a investor, looking at the building, and I don't know if they would have taken down those two buildings. So, that is just a real critical thing that we want to do right by the main building and the community as a whole. And that is, right when you pull into Mount Vernon, that's one of the first things that you do see. And it's, it's really important. So, thanks for your time. Just know if you have any questions. We're always available. Thank you.
If I could elaborate, you know, I understand the concern that House President Herman is bringing up. So, the challenge is always timing, right? To do a true development agreement, get it all the way through the process with an urban renewal amendment takes a minimum of two to three months. We didn't have two to three months in order to get that done. So, what we can do in the meantime is do exactly what we're doing and what we did at the last, not one of the last meetings with the Ben's Building, is basically establish an intent to provide incentives. And that gives us the obligation that we're seeking that we can put forth to the county in December. So, this allows me, at least I know, or when the fund happens to go negative, I can show the auditors that we have funds coming back. So, it is kind of backwards a little bit, Deb. We are not going to expend any funds until they follow through on their obligation, and we will be working on a development agreement, a more formal development agreement as quick as we can. Just with all of the required public hearings for that, it requires a little bit more time than what we had in order to meet the closing deadline. So, this is the way that we at least show that you are interested in the project and you have intentions, as long as they follow through on their end of the bargain, that you would follow through.
You have comments or observations, questions, any parties? What does the board of council here call?
I would move approval of the resolution eleven dash seven dash twenty twenty-two A in support of proposed terms to be included in an agreement for private development by and among the city of Mount Vernon, Gregory Roth and Jude Smith.
A second.
Movement seconded. Ready to vote on that?
Yes. Engel?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Great, Jude, thank you very much for being here and thank you, the other kind of citizens who want to come to Mount Vernon, so thank you very much.
We'll be out there in December.
We'll be doing a job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to G two.
Hi, Mike.
Awarding the Home Works Gold Storage Facility project.
So, as I located my staff report, we only had one bid the last time that we did the project. So, we split the project into building A, building B, and then a third option would have been building A and B together. And in a matter of three weeks or four weeks, whatever it took to get the remitted process, we ended up having four bidders. And as you can see, the top three bidders were all within about forty-five thousand dollars on one another. Interestingly enough, and I have no explanation as to why, but Peak Construction Group still has the apparent bid of five hundred and four thousand six hundred. It was also the high bid and only bidder the last time around, six hundred and fifty thousand. So, staff is recommending, because it is under engineers' estimate, to move forward with both buildings at a cost of five hundred and four thousand six hundred with peak construction. With that, I would entertain any questions. You saw the correspondence from VK Engineering in their relations to the bids that they have on, and we reviewed each of the bids for correctness.
Any questions, Chris, about this process? Details?
We're storing... Hold on, I'm sorry. No, it's okay.
Please, Bill. Introduce yourself.
Introduce yourself.
Hang on. Okay. Um, Brad Robinson, Robinson Construction, um, uh, at 2940, missing one quarter, in Lee. Previously, 12th and West Summit, which we're also a lot of people here in Mount Vernon. Just so you all know, I do have, I have three properties here in Mount Vernon, um, I do pay private taxes here. We're very involved in the community. Um, I donate to school systems, Leicester Burge Building, Sports Complex. Very proud of this town, and like to be, uh, investing in it. We, we obviously were, saw this opportunity to bid these buildings, and it's something that, that I've been doing for fifteen years. We're an EPS dealer, um, we're in the top ten percent of dealers for this EPS. Um, so this is a product that we very, very much so wanted and wanted to take. Some serious approach, and gave us some being competitive. Some of you may know, it's kind of a funny story, but kind of a sad story. In the very first, uh, bid, it was due August 25th. Uh, at 2:30, very important date in terms of getting this. I left my office with forty minutes to spare, no problem. I take my kids to school here for PK, very easy route. When I left, my office, my office manager was like, "Well, don't you be speeding," like, you know, it's like, ah, you know. Well, the thing that she didn't say is, "Don't hit a U-volt that's two volts into your front of your tire." How did that happen? So, I'm coming down Ivy 30, no big deal, everything's on time, and when we get about Palisades, tire comes on. What the heck, I can probably make it. Well, it starts going out faster and faster. So, I come off the old Ivy 30, cold cases. I'm sitting now on the ground with my truck, having a flat tire for two years, what the heck's going on? Well, it's 217, I've still got it. So, I either get this tire hooked, or I'm hiking on it through Gary's parking lot and uphill through some woods. So, realize that I'm not, the air is coming out of the hole as fast as I can, and I'm sitting there with a steel envelope with all the things that we need. So, I, I make a phone call to somebody to, "Hey, can you help me get this up here? I have so much time." So we did so, unfortunately, it was two minutes late. And, hey, rules are rules, right? Unfortunately, it happens. So, that bid was never fully opened. Now, so we expressed it in that bid, and the only thing that can prove this is that actually, I still, the cashier's check, bond, bid bond that I put in there, was dated for August 25th. And if you look at that, if anyone cares to, I have the exact same bid. Uh, I never changed that, straight from the bank, that's where it was. That shows actually where my numbers were. Meanwhile, I, I was okay with it, and, uh, fortunately, it went back to rebid. Thank, thank God. I've not tuned to utilize all the information and time that I put into this. Going back all the way to 2019, when Nick Neeson and some of those guys had invited me in to try to put together what was best for the city and what type of budgets and a good quality building. So I'm like, oh, you know, I didn't lose this. So we come to, we come back to it. I go into this, and there was two bids, or there was two options. There was one, you know, standard to June 1st, or two, this is on the very first one, on August 2nd, or if it could be done by December 1st, or later on, so that we could accelerate, because obviously, the city members needed it. So, at that point, I was taking, uh, taking that knowledge in and really trying to look at the best interest of the city. So when this bid was coming back out, knowing that I still had the potential, because I'd already kind of triggered and really put my time into talking to engineers and EPS, my concrete guy was out at the site, I had multiple times, offered four or five times, and even communicated a little bit with the city officials. So at that point, I knew what was needed and what was in the best interests of, of the city of Mount Vernon. So I went ahead and obtained the bid offer of 520, which was my second offer instead of the first, because I knew that it would allow us to get this project moving, not trading on July 1st. If you would have opened it up, you would have seen a price of 499 for the original. So, sadly, I was the lowest bid, but I was late to now. I then took what I felt was the best interest of talking to the community, the, the community, the city, just because it's not a coincidence or a conflict of interest. It's just, I live here, my kids go to school here, we're, we're around, my kids play soccer right, right beside me. And you know what? Every time I go to soccer, many times I drive down to see how things are clearing up. The mulch piles are moving, oh, I can see this. And, uh, I was, I'm involved to it. So, where, where my latest points on this are, I actually was the lowest bidder, and I'm the second lowest on the second round. But I do want to kind of go back to how, when you guys look at the plans, it's basically the, the contract will be awarded to the lowest responsive, responsible bid. And it's of the best interest of the city of Mount Vernon to make that decision of what that is. And the reason I express some of the things that I donate and involved in this community, live in this community, um, donate and, and care, is that, um, I'm obviously responsible, I'm a part of this. I've already expressed the lowest bid, and you can check that with the bid bond that was already set. And then when we come to the responsibility parts of this, I say, well, I'm responsible in the fact that my bid did not change from the scope. I took the time to do the research, to keep the price points where they needed to be, and communicate it. I did not come in a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars difference. And when you say responsibility, when you look at that, whoever's responsible of putting that first bid in and then putting the second bid in, I, I question that company's integrity and what they're trying to do. I'm not here to buy my work, I'm here to provide great service to the city of Mount Vernon. And I have, I have a, a great knowledge and a lot of experience in buildings. And right now, if you want to take a five-mile walk with me, I've got over thirty buildings here, EPS buildings. You can go right down to Mount Vernon, or Mike Lee Burn, Dennis Seacow, I won't do too many, even Old Dan Stone. At the end of the day, I feel like I am in the best interest of the city to build that building. There's future development that needs to go in there, that I'd love to be a part of. I'm also, you know, the motel and things like that, you guys are gonna see my face again here soon, but there's things that I'm trying to do to revive this city, that's gonna continue to create tax dollars and opportunities. So, all I can ask is to please take a look at this and, and understand that this isn't just a low bid, this is someone that's potentially comes in and just throws, um, you know, a, a low number, in my opinion. And I, I see that as a responsibility thing. I've been here, I haven't been late to these council meetings, because I didn't have a flat tire, and I rolled that instant. But at the end of the day, I would, I would, uh, respect you guys, uh, to take a look at that and an understanding, coming from a guy that's very involved in the community and wants to stay involved with the community. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
So, um, in spite of this, what's your first name again?
Brad.
Brad, sorry. You can call me whatever you want. So, ironically, before Brad even spoke, the question I had was, um, in, in my past life in, in the city, we did, um, have a, a, we, we passed a, a local, buy local ordinance, or resolution, I can't remember which it was, where if, uh, we could purchase or, or hire locally, within five percent of a low bid for either goods or services, that we would do that. I bring that up because while the business is located in Cedar Rapids, from a business address, and, and the, truly, this was on my mind, independently of anything Brad has said. So, um, and, and, uh, I, I knew that the business was located there, but I also knew that, um, Brad was local in terms of, of, uh, property ownership and all that. And, and I don't know anything about peak construction. So, two questions. One is, does this fall into the buy local? And two, has peak construction done any work for us in the past? And if so, what? What's the problem? Were we, were, did we get local? Hey.
And where are they located?
North Liberty. One is I, one of the bids was, I would say, North Liberty, Cedar Rapids, and I can't remember the other one.
Must have been. So, every question will. Yes, we do have a buy local policy. However, that does not or cannot be affected when it is a state-required bid. So, that's the difference between the two right now, is that the state identifies limits, called bid thresholds, in which we have both vertical and horizontal infrastructure. Once the project is estimated to exceed those dollar amounts, there's a formal bidding process that we have to. I want to preface this by, this pains me, because I, we've been talking to Brad for a long time when we first started looking at, at the buildings and the challenges. So on the first bid, correct, um, the bid time is, is set. Most of the individuals, especially if there's a lot of people there, will actually stay in the room when they turn their bids in, to make sure nobody's turning in late. We intentionally, um, by law, can't even open that bid. We have to turn it back to Brad. I couldn't even tell you what was in the original bid. I can't legally open that at that point because of him. I do not, and, and this is where I go, I would go back to the engineer. So, to my knowledge, at least in the six years that I've been here, peak construction has not done any work for the city of Mount Vernon. Therefore, I do not have any disqualifying attributes, to legally say you should not take your bid. Staff's hands are a little bit distracted by, by state law and what we're required to do and recommend. I will tell you that there are contractors that we have worked with that I will absolutely go to the attorney for and say, they won't be working for us ever again, but peak is not one of them. The other portion of that buy local, while it's a little thing, uh, three of those businesses are within thirty miles of Mount Vernon, and one actually has their business located here. So if you read the policy, it's, it's the business location, and, and...
And that's why I asked a question.
This, this, this one hurts a lot. I don't have any way to recommend not going for a peak. I can ask the attorneys if there's anything disqualifying to, to date.
So you're saying that though, from a legal standpoint, we have to?
You have to take the lowest responsible bid. Now, the responsible bid for...
Or we could not take any of this. Right?
Yes, but if you rebid, now you have to...
Right, no, just that, just, you know, we're talking about what all the options are, and that, it's a...
You could deny not do the building, but you could not deny it and not do the building simply
Right.
to, to rebid it and see if somebody can get it right the next time. That's how we, I mean, when we did it the first time, the, the bid was a hundred and forty thousand dollars over an interior estimate.
And then we did a swap.
And that's how we went ahead and reestablished the rules for this bidding procedure.
So on the responsibility part, though, when I was kind of like stressing, like, if you were looking to buy a truck, a utility box, and, uh, you goes to bid, and Cartier shipped, and I would say, "Billion," and throws a, a price together for it, and they say it's ninety thousand. And then Lynch is, is dragging over the bid, but he gets a flat tire, and he has a bid for sixty thousand. So it's like, you have, you have ninety and sixty, it's for the same thing. And it's like, hey, you know what? It's too high, because you guys really want to spend six or seventy, so then it goes back, like, we're gonna bid separate, the topper and truck. Okay, sounds good, two responsible bidders we look, right? This should come back really quick. And then it comes back, and Billion ends up being fifty-nine thousand, when he gave you a bid thirty days prior for ninety. And that's the one thing I can say, especially as someone that still has my tax dollars, if you're kind of going in this direction too, and that's the whole point. The buy local thing, I did, I did Cedar Rapids because I had to help grow my business and employees and things like that. I just originated my business out of, out of my office and home there. And, um, but my point to this is, when you read this, you have to look at that point. If any, if anybody looks at, at price gouges in that way, and that's how I feel it is, I honestly, from, from day one, and I had a chance to even look at it, they put it at a six-hundred thousand dollar valuation, still keeping it high to have those people bid into it. And I still kept myself humbled and embarrassed because it was important to build it in Mount Vernon, and I wanted the job, and it was right. Meanwhile, they went ahead and just said, "I'm at 645, you know what? They probably have a five hundred budget, let's buy some more." Boom, let's throw a dart at 504. I don't, I don't know how that is called responsible, and I think that's the biggest part that I see. And if my tax dollars go to it too, I just kind of, somebody might take, take the soccer cards, I look over there, and then how much responsive, how much communication has it had, how many questions have they asked the engineer, have they talked to the city? How many times have they stopped by to see when the mulch is, I know when the freaking wheel loader moves, I know when the mulch moves. And that was, I guess, where I feel that I have the best value. When you read this, it isn't. The lowest bid, that's one thing. But you do have to have someone who's responsive and responsible to this too. And fortunately, that's what you guys are here for, is to leave that stuff out. Well, I'm here today, you know, to show you who I think can fit that and take care of the investment of the city. And I want to be here to be able to build the future that comes behind it too. And if something does, does go wrong in the beginning, it's hard for guys to come in and clean up what's moving forward. You guys have a damage deal, you have something like that, I'm here, I'm dropping my kids off at school, I'm gonna be at somewhere, I'll drop off some scale for this. But at the end of the day, I think that that's the only strength that, that, the strong point that I can see. I'm not here to badmouth any companies. I do know that they started in eighteen or nineteen, so it's a very new company. I was sitting in the city's office designing buildings at that time for you guys.
Hard to disagree, um, from where I sit, I'm not speaking for the rest of the council, that's for sure. And, uh, I'm very empathetic to what Brad is saying. With a gap of V, very empathetic of this, and for twenty thousand, sixteen thousand dollar difference, I, I look to you, Chris, to say, you're shaking your head.
No, and, and I don't want to be here shaking my head, but what, what I would have to sit here and tell you is it's not just this, uh, sixteen thousand dollar difference. If we do not have a disqualifying reason not to take the low bid by state law, then we open ourselves up for a lawsuit. So it could be more than sixteen thousand dollars, that would end up costing the city.
So, could we go back to the attorney with the one question here? How do you go from 660 to 504?
Because it doesn't matter. This is the unfortunate part, so let, let me, let me just say this. Uh, and I know, I know the point, and, and I know that we're probably splitting hairs here, but let's just say that Canute's had given us the original bid of eight seventy-six, and came back in, and there wasn't anything in the bid package that said you have to clarify why you would go down. You have to basically, we would have to disqualify them based upon past work performance, or if they went through the specifications and the, and the engineer came back and said, "No, they missed an entire section and their, their bid is, is off." Or there's discrepancies in their bids. That's what I look towards for the engineering. By the way, the way the bid laws in Iowa are set up, you know, I could sit here and talk about this all day long, this is why we are still upset about the way that it's set up, but...
And is this because it's a city municipality? Uh, if it were just me, I would go out for this, I do think I would, obviously, or even a full-service company, you can decide.
Yes, we have to, I would, I don't want to speak for our attorneys, and I could go back and ask them if you want to table this.
Is there a hardship? I mean, if I talked to my attorney right now about hardship of what's, everything's going on, like, all the city, the city knew, the city officials knew that I had a flat tire before 2:30. And I can see all in the two minutes, it still, it got brought back to me by 2:40. I'm sitting there at the tire shop with a, with an envelope coming back to me.
I can, I can ask Brad, I don't know the answer to that. Um, I've never had... I, I've never had, I've never had a, a, a project like that where, I mean, I'm sure there's case law in Iowa, because this happened, I mean, you're admitting it happens all the time. I just, I, I'm sitting here as, as the staff person telling you, I would... I just, I, I'm sitting here as, as the staff person telling you, I would gladly go back and ask for clarifying information from the engineer and the art, or engineer and the attorney. If there's not disqualifying reasons to take Peek, the way the Iowa bidding laws are set up, it will be challenging for you to do that and you do open yourselves up for a little technicality.
Wait, so Chris, can I, good question.
Yes, sir.
Is, is there, is there some, um, uh, data that we rely upon to evaluate um, whether the, uh, the bid is reasonable and responsive? I think those are the two words that Brad used. Are, are there some quality components of the bid where those things, those features are evaluated? The responsiveness and.
Responsible, responsible.
Yes.
So, here's the type of.
Well, my question is, how can we have those as part of the expectation of a bid project but not have them evaluated in the context of the bid itself? We're just basically looking at the price. We're not looking at those other aspects of the bid if that really is what's in the bid package.
You can, but again, like I stated before, you have to have some sort of past history or a known factor A, i.e. that they're in bankruptcy court or something of that, that tangible effect that you can point your finger to and say, from a legal standpoint, we are going to not take your bid because you are not a responsible individual. But we don't have that with this bid package, is I guess basically what I'm saying. We don't have any past history with Peek. When B and K gives me their letter of recommendation, that means they've done their due diligence according to the bid specifications that were put out there. Uh, and nothing that was in their bid package looked out of the, the ordinary. And the challenge is really going to be, again.
I disagree with that. I think what looked out of the ordinary was one versus the other.
You can't look at it that way.
Yeah, I mean.
I, it, I.
I can't, but I can.
I understand what you're saying, but from a legal standpoint, I can't take that into account.
Did the engineer, did the engineer pick me as a, I mean, did the engineer, did bring Peek in as a bid?
Not that I'm aware of.
I thought they recommended him as a.
So the engineer basically went back and looked at all the bids and said that there was nothing, there was no disqualifying information in the, the bids and recommended that Peek gives the low bid if they came back.
The low responsible bid.
Correct.
But from the engineer's perspective.
Yes, there wasn't anything out of the ordinary in their bid that would preclude them from being a low bid, basically. So, again, typically what will happen in, in, uh, these situations, so here's, here would be an outlier. This, this is what I would say. If there was a four hundred thousand dollar bid and everybody else was at five hundred thousand dollars, then the engineers spent a lot of time looking through their square foot prices and everything, uh, to make sure that, um, they're, they didn't miss anything and they're not going to try and change or, or change it back. Now, here's the problem that we have. We have three bids within forty-five thousand dollars of one another. Regardless of whether or not Peek put in a bid before six hundred and fifty thousand, unless you were here or we were required in accord of law, they don't have to tell us why. Maybe prices came down in the two weeks or the three weeks in between, I don't know though. I understand what everybody is saying. I will gladly do what the council wishes me to do and ask for clarification if you would like. But I am telling you, there is nothing that has at least been handed to me thus far that will preclude Peek. As much as I don't like that, but that's what it is.
Is there a Joe below putting in a five hundred thousand dollar bidding after a private company considering the bid?
Yeah, so B and K will go back through and that's what they do. They go back through and make sure that the company is, is solid, but they don't have any lawsuits or anything like that, as long as they're not. But I, I will tell you this, there are companies in the state of Iowa that make a living off of being a low bid and you've seen that here before. And I can't stop them and the state doesn't stop them, so that's the challenge that we have.
And did you have comments you were handing up earlier, but I didn't get you to.
It was just about references. I wouldn't hire somebody without references and the city just is hands from that they have to take the, the lowest bid. They don't look at anybody's past construction, how, how, how customers were satisfied or dissatisfied as they're working, just have to take it.
So, I, I will use a contractor that has been here and that we've used. We would never use them again and there's other public entities that will. Um, everybody's experiencing different. So, again, I would have to have something tangible that I could legally argue in the court or the attorneys could legally argue in court, and I haven't been presented.
You would have thought it'd maybe be important enough to, knowing that this would be something that easily could come up. And I guess I'd be plugged up as responsiveness and responsiveness, like what?
Yeah, Brad, it's a challenge. I mean, I would be honest with you, most of the time I don't have contractors here for these things. There, there's, no, I, I, you know, I would, I would love to sit here and say that, that there was an opening that I could see. I don't.
So it is strictly lowest bid, so when I read this, I, I, it doesn't, I guess to me, I didn't take it as maybe we just have to take lowest bid.
The, the lowest bid unless I can, unless there's disqualifying reasons.
Yeah, I, I think it's important that, that, that language is very specific. It's the lowest responsible bid. That is the question, how do you determine whether it's a responsible bid or not? And the, the number one way to do that is to have the engineer prepare the bid. Does it meet the specifications? And if it does, the engineer, it's got the seal on it. That means that the engineer believes that that is the lowest responsible bid. Now, if there was something in there, as Chris has said, that they didn't bid to a certain specification properly, uh, you know, maybe, and I'm just, this is an example, you know, they bid four inches of concrete and the bid called for eight. Well, that would be a disqualifying factor. I frankly had, had not heard of two of the four, uh, bidders and that's part of why my, led me to my question, um, to, to start this. And this is frankly the most time I've ever remembered in almost nearly twenty years of being a counselor and mayor discussing a bid for anywhere. But I, there's enough question in my mind that I would feel better if we did ask the question to see, is there anything out there that we don't know about that would, uh, be a disqualifying, um, factor? And, you know, if it comes back, that if the answer is no, I would at least know that we've done our due diligence beyond just, um, following the specifications. Now, there's, I, I will say, there is a very, this is, this is the other side of me. The guy on his shoulder's talking now. We do that and do we set a precedence where every time we bid a project, we're second guessing our engineer? And I don't, I don't know that that's healthy either.
Not necessarily. That hasn't been our history, at least since I've known the council to question that. And I feel like we owe due diligence to our citizens, so I would like to move to the table. Resolution eleven dash seven dash twenty twenty-two D.
Seven. Seven. Motion on the floor to second down to table, um, I'm G two until.
And I'm gonna clarify when you say research. All I can do is ask the attorney if there's anything out there, but.
Can, can we ask the engineer also to, to check preferences and so on?
He's already certified. I just, I want everybody to understand and I, I understand where we're at, but from a legal perspective, we're on precarious ground, so two weeks. And, and I say that because state law is pretty clear when it comes to bidding on these thresholds. We don't have anything clarifying to disqualify them yet.
So, uh.
So, do we need clarification of the, the request that was put forward? Do we need to further say what we mean by research?
What I'm saying is you can put whatever research you want out there, it won't make a bit of difference. I can ask. There's a legal window which.
Nothing that you can do.
None.
Right, so what I'm getting at is do we need very specific language in the motion to, to request that you get a legal opinion on this situation?
And I'm willing to change the wording of the motion to include that, that I move to table resolution eleven dash seven dash twenty twenty-two D until at which point we have an opinion from our legal counsel.
I will second that.
Yeah, motion on the floor, move to second to table this. Do you think two weeks you would have a response?
Yeah, I think I'll have a response in what, twelve hours.
No, I have two weeks.
Uh, no, I just, I, I will probably have a fairly quick response.
And Brad, I, first of all, thank you for being here. To Chris's point, we very rarely get folks who come and follow us, so thank you. And I, it, it's cold comfort, but I hope you, um, can get the sense of frustration that we feel by how tied our hands are by state law when it comes to these sorts of things and, and all you. And, and I know that that doesn't change how I think we all probably feel this is gonna go, but, um, thank you for being here. Thank you for putting in the, your bid and doing the work on it. And I hope that this doesn't, um, you know, this won't be the last of these kinds of projects. And I hope this doesn't sound where you were tased against, uh, coming back.
No, absolutely. I think that it was just, I, I knew I needed to come in and get it off my chest because I would have already been bilking by now. And, and it just was, yeah, very unfortunate situation, but I also, from a legal standpoint, didn't know what it all entailed here. Um, I didn't take two legal counsel, uh, because I wanted to just kind of see how this goes out. But I'm also not, I'm here, I'm, I'm a part of this community, I'm actually here to benefit all of you. And, um, I do it for the city, I need to build, I need these things to happen. Um, but I do understand that you're, that they're tied and there's some legality. I don't want you guys to waste time and money battling that.
Well, and I, yeah, you know, and I, I think for, at least for our own sanity, you know, it's, so. And, and to Chris's point, we don't, we don't run into this too often, you know? Bids come in and we look at them and.
Yeah, you rarely see it. And I think what, there's a little bit of, the only part that I saw, because I looked up, because I'd never heard of Peek before. And I look up and they were incorporated, I mean, almost in two thousand and nineteen. So I look at a company that's only like three, four years old, who's trying to get stuff going. You, you once in a while see stuff like that, where they throw a bid, it's like a city bid, maybe they'll get a fortune. Maybe only Canudson and then Rob, uh, Robinson who's, like, I knew it'd be your, your best bet, I knew it. So I actually would, I, I, when I saw that, I was just, what happened? Someone totally just immaturely was not responsible with how they were managing their money now into the business but for what the city was. And at that point, I saw that as a red flag, if it be wrong. Even the engineer, to me, if the engineer's looking at that, well, hey, what specs did you give them? Well, the exact same ones I gave the first time. Well, what changed the very dates? Oh, well, they maybe put a little more time into it, maybe they lost a job, they need some work. And that's where I see that. Whereas Robinson stayed right there and put it there. So obviously you did, but I will not let anybody against it. I need you guys, I, I continue on to resolve in Mount Vernon.
Yeah, motion on the floor, going back to our, uh, move to second to table, to the next meeting, um, G two. Uh, since that's not a resolution, we do not need, uh, both vocal vote on that. So this is a voice vote on table. All of you that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here and.
Yes, thank you guys, sorry for all the time.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, take care.
Approving the resolution support for Mount Vernon area vice council, grant application to IDDD. Were you, do you raise me something in writing correctly?
Yeah, so most, um, state of Iowa grant applications require some sort of, uh, formal notification from the city that we're aware, A, of the grants and B, um, that we're supportive of. So, uh, we have a choice to do a resolution or a letter. I always find that resolutions become the entire household, sounds, um, more supportive than just a letter with one signature, so.
I move to approve the resolution eleven dash seven, twenty twenty-two C, approving resolution support and the AAC grant application to IDDD.
I'll second.
Thank you, Craig, it's a guy. Further discussion? Otherwise, Marshall, ready to call a vote?
Vernon?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Yes.
Carries, moving on to G four, certifying the kind of order of the tip depth curators. Call me year twenty twenty-two, but fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Rests.
No, that is not a typo. Those dates are correct. So, one of the oddities, uh, the certification of tax income and financing that is definitely in December before the fiscal year even begins, um, that you can potentially claim these dollars. So, going back to the previous conversation, you either have to have some obligation or an intent to have an obligation in order to certify those dollars. Now, we have two subdivisions that we certify, basically whatever we're allowed to certify. Um, the reason we do that is because the number of houses changes from year to year and I can't put like an absentee number on it. Uh, and then we have the other known. So, you know, we have the LBC, bond payment and the interfund loan that purchased this building. So those are all known factors and then we've been keeping it right around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, between five and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars since I came to the city. We're gonna be slightly higher this year because of the fifty thousand dollar increase. However, uh, we saw a significant increase in value last year and I expect to see a decent increase in value this year. So it shouldn't significantly impact any of the asset blocks. We'll see what happens in twenty twenty-four.
Any questions, Chris? On this bid report?
I move to, uh, resolution eleven dash seven dash twenty twenty-two D.
Thank you, Scott, is there a second?
Second.
The ball. Moving second, it's move forward on eleven dash seven dash twenty twenty-two D. You already called a roll, Marshall.
No.
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Resolution passes, moving on to, I'm G five. In case of a war being, please relocate on lot three, Cornell College, second edition, City of Mount Vernon.
This is a, um, an easement that was actually put in place before the school dropped the ground. Uh, this is part of the original Cornell subdivision. We are meeting, I believe, on Thursday, um, of this week to discuss new easements with the development of the athletics complex. So, long story short, we don't need this easement, we're gonna vacate it and then we will accept new easements when the attorney. we will accept new easements when the maturity of the water main is going to be, uh, coming late.
I move to approve of resolution 11 dash 7 dash 2022B.
Your calls are served.
I will second, but with a clarifying question. In the miniscule chance that this facility doesn't go through, do we just take it back? I mean, if they don't end up moving the, the water main, but we vacate the easement?
Um.
I mean, I don't wanna start.
Could, could we get it back? Yes, but we don't, I don't think we actually have anything in this portion of it right now. It was, it was all designated during the original subdivision when they, they had.
Envisioned.
Yeah, envisioned certain things. So that's the meeting on Thursdays to sit down and figure out where best to allow the easements to come in and out of this property. Thank you.
Move, second to move forward on, um, on G5. Any other questions? And we are going to vote, Marsha, please.
Rose?
Yes.
Ingle?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Houses, moving to G6, section streets in operation for ATV to be used, that's in Vine Street 77.
I just feel like we discussed this like forty times.
Basically, the resolution says that ATV and ETV use can be on any city streets.
I saw an ATV go without a business thirty today.
The exception of business thirty in Iowa.
Except for Cross.
You can cross.
Yep.
Add an interview.
Yes.
I would move to approve of resolution 11 dash 7 dash 2022H.
Ball?
I'll second.
Thank you, yeah. Any further comments or observations about this one? Got the other man?
I know this one.
All right, all right.
I'll sign later.
Move this resolution and call the roll, please.
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ingle?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
First of the passes, moving to J1, consideration claims list, I think you have one, updated one sound by March this afternoon. Any questions on that? Just always appreciate the video highest to lowest.
Yes.
That's it?
Very helpful.
Thank you. The next question, that is my question.
I would, uh, move approval of the claims list as presented.
Thank you, Scott. It's okay. I'll start with that. Thank you, Chris. Where you vote on that is a voice, voice vote. All care of motion to approve the claims list, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On J2, consideration of parking lot improvements of the north side of the fire station. Need you to add to that?
No, so, uh, essentially, um, there are permeable, permeable pavers, I say that a lot, um, on what would be the north parking lot, the east side of that. Um, so that parking lot's half and half, basically. The pavers are designed to allow, as a storm water control, allow, um, surface water to essentially drain through the cracks and then seep into the groundwater. A portion of that has collapsed, um, and needs to be replaced. And talking with staff, the challenge with pavers, especially in Iowa, is the amount of debris that gets into those cracks and actually, um, causes the barrier versus actually allowing seep through. So they, there's a, I call it a big vacuum, I don't know what the proper term is for, but every three years, those cracks, the top quarter into the, uh, pillar, and it's not really sand, it's one of those to look up, but that has to be sucked out and then new put back. So there's an ongoing expense, obviously, with permeable pavers. And in this instance, and we had, um, the engineer check whether or not we received a grant for these pavers specifically, because if we did, we would be replacing the pavers and just moving on. We did not. Or the use of the fire department does have back there, so they do a lot of, if they get a donated vehicle, they'll do extrication, training in that back area, so there's glass and other things that, in this area. It would just be a lot easier and more convenient for staff if we could remove the pavers and put concrete back into place and just finish off the parking lot the rest of the way. Now, that's the easy way out. It's about a thousand dollars more expensive to do the concrete, but you don't have the ongoing maintenance expense later on. However, uh, permeable pavers are a sustainability, um, issue. And it does, it is an alternative, not then to just having water run off and run onto the streets and then the storms there system. So where I put in the, the report, normally, I would just make the decisions, you either fix or repair, um, put concrete in this parking lot, there's a little bit more at stake than when we have a council lab conversation in regards to the direction.
So I have a couple of questions. I've been part of the decision-making of that design. Do we know what the, um, what caused the failure?
Just the subbase. Um, we'll have to pull the bricks out and, and reestablish the subbase. Correct me if I'm wrong, and there's like, is there six inches of rock that typically sits below these pavers?
I actually looked at the prints and I don't remember that detail, to be honest, but, um, to make it a little easier to understand, the, in between every brick joint, there's like three, it's like, it's a little bit smaller than we say, a three-eighths, clean chip rock, and that is essentially a filter. So the water goes through there and leaves debris, training, I mean, they've asked me to crush cars out of their forms so they can do stuff, so they get glass, whatever. Um, and that can fill up relatively quick, um, which then doesn't allow the filtering of the water and doesn't allow that to enter here. I don't know why, I, I talked to Boggs, Dan Boggs, about this, and I initially tried to find out what the problem was. And he said they had attempted to try to repair that some years ago, and this parking lot's been like that since I've appeared, so I don't know when it actually started falling apart. And his, his explanation was, or, or his diagnosis was there was a failure in the pipe, and so they dug behind the back of the curb, put some concrete back there to try to eliminate the erosion. Apparently that wasn't done correctly, and so material's going somewhere, I don't quite know yet where to do that. So I initially looked into the, to, I talked to Culvers, um, out of Cedar Rapids, and, um, I don't think it's something our staff, we can do it, but it would be really time-consuming for us, um, to go ahead and dig that out, put that back. And Dave Schenker actually, um, referred me to them, they did a lot of that, uh, to see what's going on. So part of, part of that estimate I got from those guys was to actually dig down, fix whatever the problem is, and then re, and then relay all the, the pavers in the spots, and there's more than one spot, but there's one spot by the manhole really bad. Um, and then, of course, clean all the joints out and, and then apply to the new chips and the joints. So that, that cost came out about a thousand dollars less than just pulling it out, creating it out, and painting it. And then, like Chris said, then we don't have the recurring cost of cleaning it and repainting the.
Have we been, I think you mentioned it's a three-year cycle, but we're supposed to be, have we been vacuuming it on that? Have we been doing what we're supposed to be doing on that one as well, or?
Not that I'm aware of.
So I guess my point being that the sustainable, well, the sustainability, the, um, concern is, is valid if we're not doing it, it's not, it's not doing what it's supposed to be doing.
So the challenge with, um, pavers is just the scarce amount that we have. So to, to purchase the equipment, to do what Eldon is, is asking, doesn't make any sense from administration's standpoint simply, because we don't have that much to do. So you run a piece of equipment and then do that work. We don't have the expertise, so it's probably best that we would just contact Culvers or one of the companies that does do the work and have them do it every three years. What I haven't been able to get an answer on was the why. Normally, we'll do pavers or something to this effect when we have a very tight site access or flooded areas for storm monitoring attention, um, to a more normal, uh, alternative for Iowa, just because of the winters that we have and the debris that we have in the parking lot. So, uh, I will say that they tried to convince us to do this on the LBC and we absolutely brought our engineer out of the office because we knew, um, what we were running into. Yeah, it is a challenge. I mean, I, from a staff perspective, I definitely want to support sustainability efforts. Sometimes if engineering overrules, uh, some of those. And then as the technology gets better, I think we'll be in a better position, but, I still haven't figured out why they only did half the parking lot. They didn't even do half the parking lot, they did about a third of the parking lot because the traveling and parking spaces to the west are all concrete.
So the idea there being that, um, we would, it was supposed to be designed so that water would flow there and percolate and do its thing and flow into the groundwater versus rushing out to the gutter and down the street. Um, the best laid plan is by some men, um, that was the first plan in the city ever. You know, do anything like that.
I think it's a sound, um, it's a sound design. The only issue that I would say with something like that, and what I would have said at the time was, uh, that is designed then to take a rain event or a water event that happens, say, on Saturday, every, uh, basically a drizzle or a light rain throughout the day, and then the water's allowed to seep and sheet and make its way. Those are not designed, obviously, for the heavy, you know, one- to-two-inch, half a train per hour type events because the cracks aren't big enough to allow that water to filter through. So, yeah, you know, there's, there's pluses and minuses on, on both sides of this, this fence. I think from, from the perspective of it just being the fire department and knowing what they want to do back there, I prefer just putting it back in concrete simply because they are crushing cars back there and doing extrication, and I know that's because my wife's done a couple of them. So, uh, just the amount of debris that they generate from, from these two.
Well, in essentially, I mean, I understand the design and how that's supposed to work, and I get it.
And that wasn't understood to be, I mean, we really didn't know that that was going to be happening. Sure.
I can imagine it wasn't in their, their trading plans when they.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I think, I think this is an example of where, you know, the intent was good, um, the, uh, effort was made, we learned from it. I, I think that we would certainly want to consider pavers in certain applications, um, you know, permeable. We talked permeable pavers, we talked about permeable asphalt, and we also talked about permeable concrete. It was, you have all, all of those options, we went with the pavers because of the brick look, uh, and whatnot. Um, and, and I think this is where, uh, we learned from it, and, and I think the reasonable thing to do is, is when I think about maintenance and, and, you know, repair and, and how that parking lot sits and, you know, bang for our buck, I, I think it's a reasonable recommendation to, to move from the pavers to, uh, uh, you know, even though the upfront cost is going to be higher, I think your long-term costs in this case are, are, um, you know, better served, knowing what goes on there. And those trainings are important, and those demonstrations that they do for, uh, you know, this is, oop, uh, those types of things are critical to what they do. And, um, I, you know, I believe this is one of those where you say, okay, we, we tried it, we learned from it, and if we make better decisions going forward.
Well, and essentially, the design's not gonna change that much. Under, under, under those permeable pavers, there's a line of tile that run to collect all that water that goes in.
I, I, hey, guys, I can't hear Eldon. I can't hear what he's trying to tell me, and I have a question.
How's that, Adam, out there?
Well, Eldon needs to be on a mic or something. I don't know. Yes.
That's, that's Eldon now.
I do.
Did you have a question first, I guess, before?
I, I do, I do. So I understand the trade-off, I, I totally get it, but have, have we had someone assess the, the water impact if we move from permeable pavers to concrete?
So, I mean, I haven't had anybody look at that, but that's what I was getting ready to explain, is essentially the, the design is gonna stay relatively the same. The surface water from that parking lot is still not gonna go out onto the street. The, all that tile goes to the manhole where the cave-in spot is, is currently at in the parking lot. That water then goes from that manhole out into that big hole that's to the northeast of the parking lot, and, and that's why the rotandings happen anyway. I can make all that water go to the same place. Um, all that surface water, I just make a break in the curb on the east, east side of that, I may level over everything, you know, and, and it's easily done. Um, the tile that's still on the ground will still collect groundwater and do the same thing it was doing before, so we're not, I'm not really altering too much here other than just the surface of the parking lot, so if that helps anything as far as the.
It does. I just, I just don't know, do we have some obligation to have somebody look at this if we make this kind of change in the way that we do things? I just don't, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I actually almost got riled up, because Nate's been on me for some time, since I took next position about getting that fixed. I actually reached out to, to Dave Schenker at 3K and had him look at that with me. Um, and I think I mentioned that earlier, he, he's one of you. He said I would, I would call Culvers and see what, I mentioned to him what maybe the alternative could be. Um, he said I, I'd reach out to Culvers, have them give you a quote on what it is, and then you could have a comparable cost, um, to do one or the other.
Yeah, so that, that basin to the north was, to, to Dave's point, if, you know, do we have a, a, a obligation? That basin to the north was put in to, to cover those large heavy rain events where the water was not going to seep through and it was going to run off. And it would be caught there so that it didn't flow or flood the, uh, Washington Square condominiums. And, and in fact, doing what we did corrected, um, water flow and actually fixed the problem that, that existed there prior to the fire station being built.
So to answer your question of, Dave had, we had discussed it with him, um, I don't really have done the actual calculations, but his explanation was, was this, is that permeable pavers do not, uh, significantly change what is considered calculation of a hundred-year flooding, because, again, those scenarios, the water is coming down at such a rate that it's not seeping through those pavers as is. So the detention portion of that is to ensure that the, the runoff is leaving the site at the same rate that it was prior to the development. I can ask him for, for clarification on what the calculation difference would be, but I don't believe. I don't believe, at least in my conversations with him, that he felt like the calculations would be significantly different between the pavers and the concrete, simply because pavers are not considered a porous surface per se, at least in the hundred-year rain event is the way they explain it to me. Still considered an impervious surface in that regard. However, the, like I said, the rain events of Saturday would, would benefit or the pavers would benefit and allows some of that water to make its way into the ground. I can ask for clarification. Again, you can see why this was such a cut and dry decision for me to just have him go ahead and make, make changes. I want to.
One other, as long as we're talking about water runoff and the unintended consequences of doing things where we're really needing to do them, crushing cars results in not only glass, but cars have all sorts of fluids in them that we don't want necessarily going into watershed. Do we, as a, as an department or as a city, drain those, prepare them for, I mean, we're not just out there just taking one and a half gallon of.
Yeah, so anytime that they use things like that for training purposes, it's the same that they were to go in and burn the building. They have to go in and remove certain aspects of them before they can actually be used as a training vessel. But yeah, they do drain fluids. One of the perks, I guess, of having a volunteer department and a number of experts in different fields willing to help out. But they do prep them. Of course, the glass is going to be part of the training exercise, the cutting of metal or the shears that they use, basically. There will be debris from, from that. So there are certain aspects that you can't just pick up. Again, we can go either way with this, but it's just a, I guess, here's my fear, and it really comes back to me, so if it, we weren't doing the maintenance and hadn't been doing the maintenance from the inception of the building, it sounds like. And I've been here for six years and we should have done it at least once in that timeframe. And I know we haven't. So we get a need, the staff may get better at making sure that those things get taken care of, still not guaranteeing that we won't have some failures in the future or, you know, we go ahead and put it back in concrete and lessen the amount of staff work that goes into it.
Based upon the type of fluid, because I'm not sure that the lack of maintenance is actually the issue. It sounds more like water flow underneath the papers and erosion is more an issue there. With that being said, I would give approval of parking lot improvements to change the permeable papers to concrete.
So second?
I'll say it.
Well, Scott. Chris's point about maintenance, another item that hasn't been mentioned, and this is for anyone that is in a high-traffic area that has to deal with a snowplow, whether it's a sidewalk or a blade, once those bricks start getting erected, you get shipped out and they go all the way. And a second thing, a question, is it reasonable to save the pavers or some other future crosswalk project or anything like that? Or is that totally inappropriate? I mean, I know we saved bricks from Main Street construction and, and are different places and you use them out of other places. So I guess consider that.
Let the man's keep me.
And maybe in a park, not in a.
And we clarify, we will verify before we remove the pavers, but with Dave, that he does not have any concerns, just one last time to ensure that there aren't any issues there.
I think man wants to work with the LVC. Man hold for it.
He already denied that.
He's still on my side of the weather.
You're almost broke.
Motion floor to approve the parking lot improvements, the fire permits, the parking lot, ready to go on that, all clear? That motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Here is moving on to City Council Chamber renovations. It's crazy to be having trouble with this, even works. I read it.
You've only been living high up here.
Oh, it's freezing in here.
I have a heater.
Save the money.
They always have their best thing to do, so I will say that City Hall definitely stays a little warmer now that the officers are no longer up there.
Usually it's the officer.
Catwater is very warm.
I was going to say, they, they always have about twenty or thirty pounds more on the. No, we are quickly, obviously, reaching the end of the useful life of, of this chambers. Brief history, we moved out here, obviously, because we were able to separate easier and maintain distances during COVID. It was never intended to be a full-on change. And we had openly spoken about that at various meetings, that this was just a temporary thing during COVID. With that being said, we've done some renovations to the first floor of City Hall, and I would like to finish those renovations in a fairly quick turnaround. Those being new ceiling tile, new lighting, and of course, fresh paint and carpet. And to accomplish that, it's going to be right around $25,000 to get those done. And the only thing that would really be left at that point would be technology and then For anybody that has sat in those chairs for more than a few minutes, they're awful. So I guess I just want to clarify.
Maybe we should get his old spot.
What we, what we'd like to do is actually, if you can envision the old council chambers, so we have the dais, what mounted to the north wall? We would like to remove the dais and bring that floor elevation down. And that would actually be where staff would sit, and then the council would then, in an L shape, so they would be right in front of the mural that was put down there. So you would be sitting on that wall. And then from a technology standpoint, we would put a large TV on the opposite wall for you guys to be able to see not only those that are entering in on Zoom, but should be, be able to screen share. And so for instance, the easement, we would be able to show that. And then we'd have two small TVs mounted on either side of your table. The reason for this is staff has, chief has clear visibility to the doors coming in. We have an exit door that both staff and council could make their way to in an event. So we're always mindful of those things. But I just wanted to receive, basically receive permission to start those renovations, get them going. Again, my expectation is $25,000 to $30,000 on the renovation itself. And then we would come in front of you. Most of the technology that you seek here will actually get transferred to, to City Hall, so maybe purchase of TVs and some things like that. Eventually, the partition wall that we have, we'd like to replace. It's fairly old, but that's not necessarily an immediate view. We can use the one we currently have still. But getting the carpeting done and then painting the lights.
That one's just get out here.
We're mostly getting moved forward on that.
Correct. If there's any questions or concerns about what we're planning to do, I would love to hear them now.
I mean, I assume when we talk about technology, we're talking about moving the cameras back in and having the four K ones that we have here.
Yes. And I would actually be talking about the cameras, the nice part about the cameras is this, this building is a lot higher than, than the City Council chambers. And where we're going to be from a council perspective and staff and normal proceedings, it's a little bit more compact. So I think there'll be better visibility for those that are watching from.
Yeah, so Craig, if you want a bit warmer in this, you said.
No, I think council chamber is going to get plenty of hotness from that big screen TV that's in there. Seriously, those things will, you know.
Are you looking for a match exceed?
Uh, for the initial, not to exceed 30 for the initial renovations. And then I will bring back the technology and the furnishings too.
Where's the 30 coming from? I'm seeing 16,000 and then.
So you have. The ceiling quoted around six, 10,000 for, for you and then the carpet. The carpet.
Okay, so the 16 is just for the lights. Well, it says, and the ceiling tile is expected to be around 16,000.
I would say all in all, it's going to be less than 25. There are supplies that public works are going to purchase. They might fur out the wall so that instead of the mural being protruding, it will actually be something. They're going to fur that wall up.
Well, that was really.
Yeah, there, so there'll be supplies that they're going to do. Some of that work will be obviously done by staff. We're trying to utilize the existing grid. We would just add cross-sections to get the smaller tile section.
Well, in that case, unless there's further comments or questions, I would approve of the initial round of development at the City Council chambers, not to exceed $30,000.
Take it down, sir.
I'll say it.
Take it down. For any more further questions, ready to go on that motion? As a voice vote, everybody with a favor, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Moving on to UV disinfection bulbs, a voice motion is Senator Alex.
This is a bitter pill to swallow. So this is going to be an ongoing expense, speaking of which, of every three to five years. So the bulbs that were put in as part of the phase one renovations, obviously, are required by our permit and have to be replaced. Alex indicated that the rate at which they're failing at the moment is fairly pressing. So they will stop using the UV disinfection next week or the week after. So we can stop using them in the November, then they have to restart in the spring. So what he'd like to do is order these bulbs and have them available in the spring. They would replace those bulbs, whatever existing bulbs, bulbs were still okay to use, he would salvage and then use them as replacements if they had a failure.
So this, this 25 and change is a total switch out of those bulbs, is that correct?
And, and how far do 13 of these go? Is that 50% of the field? Is that 100% of the field?
So this is, my understanding is this is 100% of the field and he was going to salvage whatever existing bulbs he could and use them as a replacement if any, any of the individual bulbs were to fail, moving forward. But he is definitely concerned that we will not make another season with the existing
As staff recommendation to, by another round, we did the special ball. Voice power, Chief at Center. This was a DNR increased regulation from a few years ago. If I remember correctly.
So every 10 years, we are issuing a new permit from the DNR. And every 10 years, when we get a new permit, they come up with new requirements for us to need. So UV disinfection and nutrient reduction strategies were this program. Phase one was UV and phase two will be the nutrient reduction. And by the time we get that one done, it'll be time for us to get a new permit.
Motion on the floor, ready to go on that, for voice votes.
Well, we don't have a motion actually.
We don't have a motion. But you, you have to do it. Yeah, we spent most dollars. So, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to move approval of, yeah, resolution, whatever it is. It's not a resolution number on it. I'm going to move approval of buying the, the bulbs as quoted for. Yep.
Second, sir. Red board motion. For the question, will, will you please say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Discussion items, but no action.
Can I just ask something here? Because this feels really uncomfortable and I understand that, I, I'd like to have us have a public position as far as what we're investing here, so our community really understands what our investment cost was and what our ongoing cost is. Because I don't think people have an appreciation for what this really means when these things are put forward to us as, as requirements.
I, no, and normally they don't. So, you know, I would say this, our total investment cost for this, this renovation or this round of improvements is going to be in the neighborhood of $3.4 million.
It's huge.
And we were, we were able to save the, the phase two improvements so that we didn't have to seek both sets at, at one time. But we will have to start those within the next year and a half. And, you know, at that point, we may be looking at an underground storage tank or we may be looking at a new clarifier. I don't know quite yet. And I'm hopeful that when we get our permit reissued, you know, I'm really kind of hoping that DNR gets behind and then we give it two 10 years from the time that we stop doing this. But what it amounts to is that 3% increase in sticker rates that has been set as an automatic for the last five years is going to continue for another 10 years.
Yeah, exactly. And, and I really, I mean, people feel it in their bill that they get, but they don't understand where it's coming from. But these aren't decisions that we're making in isolation to spend their money. They're being promoted as things that we have to do, not that we have a choice in.
Good point. Take it down for that optimization merger. We need discussion items, chapter one, stretches, resource recovery, and roof use control.
So at the last meeting, I gave all of the changes that have to be made to essentially the garbage ordinance, because we're moving away from the tag system to the UTO system. But two of the policies that I asked you to take time to think about, and you don't necessarily have to discuss them tonight, but I wanted to keep them on the agenda for, for you to continue to consider is, because we do have snowbirds asking questions now. Past practices, we allow them to stall payments or stop payments as long as they're going to be gone for three months or more. The question is, do you want to continue that? And if so, it won't necessarily be in the ordinance, although the garbage portion of that would be in the ordinance because it would be in the current. I would have council consider an actual policy that says we've established what I would consider as snowbird policy. And then you can decide on what is allowed or not, not allowed. I mean, they pay, right now, they currently pay the, the minimums that are required. They're not, not allowed to basically shut off all of their required monthly bill. They can shut water off. The question is, can they stop paying garbage because they're not here to use it? We've, we've heard arguments on both sides of this. And again, the question is going to be, the second one is a little bit more challenging. We, we used to give out tags to qualifying individuals. The unfortunate part is, just from a location standpoint, those individuals that are getting the, the free tags probably aren't going to be able to take advantage of a reduced monthly garbage bill. Because in the instance of one of the largest locations, which is the mobile home garden, the owners of the mobile home garden actually pay the garbage bill. the owners of the mobile court actually pay the garbage bill, so we have no way of giving a credit to the actual individuals. They don't pay the individual bill. Mobile, mobile home court owners pay us and then they bill their tenants separately. So we only bill the owners and we don't, um, deal with the other individuals. So that, that low income program becomes a little bit more challenging just because there's no guarantee for us that they would be getting back to the individual what it's meant to. That was one of, I would say, one of the beauties of the tag program is for the individuals themselves to go. So those are the two items, like I said, these are fairly large, um, in the grand scheme of things. So I don't necessarily want to hurry you into making any decisions. The ordinance needs to be changed here for it as soon just because we don't have a tag program anymore and it's completely obsolete, but, um, again, that's why I'll be on the discussion item until we decide to make.
Well, the snowbirds, you're gonna start taking off your...
They are, they are, and they, you know, they are asking for clarification and then we haven't made a decision, so.
With the cities that, uh, are wide enough for that, you often compare us to, in doing research, is there any policy there that could help council us or advise us?
No, to me, it's, it's, you, what it is, is it's either they do where they want. And again, I've heard the same argument.
The ones that do that, uh, could do...
Similar policies, uh, there's a, you, you, a minimum of two months minimum. They have to be gone for two months before they'll go through the, the process of allowing them to do that.
Pretty tough drive.
Yeah, uh, it, it's kind of like, uh, to me, I chalk it up to being the same with the post office. You could stop your mail seventy days throughout the month, but you have to be gone for, I think, seven days at a, at a time or something like that for them to hold it. Uh, it's so that you don't take advantage and, and just start the stop service whenever you're gonna take a vacation. So true snowbirds would be gone for, for three months.
We have, we have a three-month policy there, right?
Um, correct. And, and again, their argument is they're not here to use the services. And on the other side of the argument that we've, that we've heard as well, if they can read both places and wanted to get a discount to it. This is, this is what I hear on either side of this conversation and again, I don't... It is something that we have allowed. Uh, the only change that we've made thus far is the fact that we've gone from the TOE system, our tag program to the TOE system, so.
So, so the idea would be that the, the charge, the itemized charge for the TOEs, the basically twenty change, would stick, the ten fifty, the, what, all that other stuff?
The ten fifty and all of that would stay.
Right.
The, the, the amount that is charged to us from Republic would then...
So, relevant to my question, the last time we talked about this, where are some of the services that, that was funded through those trees you mentioned, a couple other things, those would still be funded regardless of...
Yeah.
That was...
The, the, the most challenging part of this, um, is that we have to independently verify that we're not being charged for those accounts. So we have to ensure that we notify Republic that those accounts are suspended for this three-month, for this three-month period. And then we have to, to verify that they are not actually, uh, billing us for those, because if, if we don't, then the rest of the community is so... That program, I don't think that was necessarily the intention.
Like, what are you talking about? How many households?
I, you know, forty? It's...
Not a significant amount.
Right, a few, you know.
Correct, it's not, it's not a significant, like, in the grand scheme of things, but, um, it's a decent amount, but it warrants time.
Yeah.
Sounds like you should give a gen item.
It does. What I really wanted to try and avoid, if there were strong feelings on either side of this, because typically I will give you an ordinance and say, here's the language that we've kind of discussed thus far, do you want to make any changes? This way we either strike language or add it.
So, one thing I think the only area with the snowbird policy is that that you, they would not pay that, but the city would still have some administrative costs.
Right.
And add to that with Republic.
That's why I asked, can we...
Yeah, I, you know.
Are there strong feelings right now from the, from our citizens?
Strong feelings from the snowbirds.
So it's a real vote by no one to take?
Correct. And again, I, the, the answer for me would be fairly clear if Matt had stuck, or Matt from Republic had stuck here and said, yes, we will suspend billing those accounts, because if they didn't, then I would say absolutely not, because then we're trying to subsidize the individuals that are not here. Now we're talking about, as long as Republic adheres to what they said in the open meeting, you know, now we're talking probably what, what amounts to a couple days' worth of administrative work over a period of time, so that they, you know, strictly at all, it'll be probably a couple days' worth of it.
So, would you validate with...
I wouldn't have to validate because I have it on my video. I would just remind Matt that he may have, like, here's some meeting.
I mean, I, I, I get that, that it does result in, um, further administrative work. I, I see it as a, you know, since we're, since, aside from that cost, the city isn't out of any other funds. I would be against continuing.
Yes, the, the challenge for me is, the only change that we really made was, again, to who our service provider was and how we provide the services, as long as the provider is, I mean, the only thing that I would say is, I would want you to adopt a formal policy so that it is not just staff going, this is the way that we've done it.
And, and this would be a policy similar to what we voted on earlier with regards to the Bryant Road dump site? So that, so that if we find out that people are taking advantage of us, we can say, aye, aye.
Yeah, the only difference would be, this wouldn't be an ordinance, this would just be a policy, so violators of this policy would just not allow to be able to do it in the future. Uh, we wouldn't necessarily try to take them to court or seek their action that way, but they would just not allow, be allowed to take advantage of that.
Yeah, you do this a good thing.
Yes. And, and I would...
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, you know, this is an evaluation that we've promised that we would undertake as a council after the implementation of the change over Republic. So I do think that we are obligated as a council to at least take this under advisement and come up with a workable solution um, for the future. So while today it's forty people, tomorrow it might be fifty, might be twenty-five. We still need to have a workable policy that we can use. Our policy used to be the sale of the tanks, right? Either people got them or they didn't, with the garbage out or not. Now we have a different situation. I think we need to do our due diligence as a council.
So, interesting. From your perspective, gentlemen?
I have any suggestions?
So what I think I will do is give you the ordinance that includes the language for both. And if I, I will include the, the language that refers to snowbirds and then I will attempt to have a policy that, like, you know, based upon current standards or current actions, this is what the policy would look like. I will attempt to include a lot of moderate income language, but I'm not exactly sure I can get there with the pension system.
Still, having something, something to look at would be a reference for us and sometimes that generates controversy.
And even if, yeah, and even if the LMI solution isn't perfect because of ownership issues and who is actually paying the bill, there's, there's a certain portion of the population that goes outside of us, that you take advantage of. And so I think we still need to, um, even if it isn't as easily implemented as the tax system, I think there's still, uh, an need for that to happen. I think in time it will.
I agree.
Do you have a direction?
Yes, the only, um, comment that I would have is my presence at the next meeting is questionable. At this point, I will be on vacation, um, so this, this particular conversation I would like to have when I return. I would want to use it as a reminder for the staff to do while I was gone. My current plan is to be here for the house meeting and just be gone after the time, but, um, so.
Garbage will still be here when you buy it.
Yes. It's been a long year and, uh, just a few days.
Yeah.
Okay, exhausted, that's how big we are to the fourths. Um, there's important, probably at five things here. First of all, tomorrow's bid opening with work out. Uh, Mike Tucker from Work, the manager, on this building, two.
Pre-bid meeting.
Pre-bid meeting, two o'clock tomorrow, ready? Second thing is, um, I forward for your information, uh, a report from Republic about how much garbage we're getting picked up and how much recycling, there's cases of base light that there, um, I don't have to read too much into it, yeah.
What a difference in wonderful base.
Yeah, we're, we're reporting at the beginning.
End of the summer, so.
We didn't see where it levels off and...
Yeah, I, I appreciated that.
Yeah, it's phenomenal.
For information, it's a thing that got available and, um, so, see where it goes. But, but, kind of recycling movement is going up, but I don't know which would level off that. Third thing was, uh, I did pass on to Mr. Matt, um, a state contest, was it directed at Iowa Wellness? Um, he's actually, uh, the idea was to get, see what percentage of the population you could get walking on a certain day next October, which is, I don't know, somewhere in the League of Cities convention a month ago. Um, but the reward for that was a thousand dollars. It's a lot of work and I, I'm talking about, we agreed that, yep, it'd be nice, but it's not worth a thousand dollars, we got a hundred thousand dollars for the... For the whole, yeah, the, or, uh, that project is very, uh, hard to edit over that, so we're gonna take a pass on that one. And I have a city building meeting next Thursday and I'm gonna add on about that for minutes more on about that. And I interviewed today, actually, I'm Nicholas from Lynn County Development, Planning Development, about being on a committee on solar farms. They're starting out in the next two, three months, uh, two cases, they passed, but they're both in court, so I'm not so sure what's gonna happen with that. And, um, campaign item that I may put out there over a year ago was, um, that league as council, uh, something I was going to try to encourage strongly, um, old Chris, uh, foremost appraisal of some form, and this is an awkward thing to talk about, all experiences in the past, I'm sure, but, um, I've got several different instruments and I'll probably forward those on. This does not need to be a dissertation, I mean, keep it simple and, um, and it's gonna, it's, you gotta be confidential, but it's an appraisal of performance of a person that's actually part of our job to appraise. And, um, I think it's kind of gotten pretty bright and informal in the past, but, uh, I'd like to get the thought in your head right now, um, start thinking about it, I mean, we're a couple meetings away from asking you to actually do it, but, uh, I will have to call you back and say, Scott, the deadline was here, if you don't have yours, it's the only thing we're waiting for, so.
Wish, yeah.
You know, and then, and I'm not gonna be talking about, fucking Scott right now. Don't make it weird, right? But, uh, I would think a little aggressive, add this discussion with him, uh, he's expecting that and, um, so I just want to let you know those appraisal forms we have out there, um, that's a spirit of precision, yeah. So that's my, um, mayor's report, but I'm gonna turn it over to Stephanie about, um, Iowa Women's Foundation. Do you want to add that now?
Last week, some of us attended the, um, uh, forum for recovered childcare that was put on by the League of Women Voters. And it was very clear that there is a huge need and also a whole lot of support in our community toward more and more accessible childcare. And I just, I feel that it's such an important part of what, where we need to be going in terms of serving our community for many reasons, um, that I agree to be a co-contractor is what they call it. It's, it's the equivalent basically of a project manager with, um, Nicole McAlister, who's the executive, the executive director of the South East Community Center. Uh, so she and I have worked together to basically organize a large team broken up by separate committees uh, to facilitate how we're gonna get this done. And, um, we've got a lot of creative people in the community, we've got a list of people that want to be involved, as, you know, several of them, you know, Tom has been in conversations with Cornell and Northland Community School District, um, about some of these things as well. In, Tom?
No, what, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I think you have to add something. So the next step is that probably the weekend of Thanksgiving, we're working on setting up a time to meet with the people that are on the league committee. And we are also going to get the notes that were, um, provided from the event. There were several people that did brainstorming and took a lot of notes and put them all over the walls. So we've got to sit down and basically consolidate all those and put together a project and, and then branch out to communicate with all the different sort of stakeholders and, um, um, committees. You got the ball, Ross, who gives up? I'm gonna put my PMP certification and project manager, just to go.
That is a big project, that is a big deal. And, um, thank you Stephanie for stepping up on that. Any other councils, reports, committee reports?
Two, just two quick things, a plug for the pool meeting that is this, uh, next Thursday, the seventeenth, at six thirty. By the... Five thirty. At five thirty, five thirty, at the LBC. And this is a, uh, a report from Waters Edge and Interactive and Community of Water.
Yeah, formal presentation, formal presentation.
Excellent.
Uh, and then there'll be obviously discussion, question, answers, all that afterwards.
And then tomorrow is election day, of course. Um, I believe this is the second election we've had since we redid the precincts and we're the election to vote. And especially yesterday, I was quite confident as to where I was gonna vote and I was getting tired in the morning, so. If you have any questions about that, countyiowa.gov has all sorts of good location-based information for you on where your polling place is, so. But, uh, get out there and exercise that right.
Exactly. Um, any other committee reports?
Just want to add, um, CDG board meets this week, so I'll be catching up with them on Wednesday. I've missed a couple of those due to be out town for work, so I will give an update on that. Do you have anything to add, Tom?
Um, no, 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 sorry. Um, anything else from the city council report?
No, I will not be at that meeting, uh, until I have figured out how to do that from a plane, so, um, uh, my, my current plan is to be out, um, starting Thursday the seventeenth and then be coming back, um, Monday after Thanksgiving, so city hall is closed, um, for Thanksgiving the day after. But I'll work on the packet for you, you know, I will be out of state from the seventeenth to the twentieth. Doug, we're in charge, gone, gone, and then I will be back in town, I believe, which will be the twenty-first.
Okay. Anybody else need, need to come before this council? Otherwise, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See y'all later.
See you.
See you.